The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. This evening, our invocation will be given by Lance Howard, the discipleship minister at Park Avenue Church of Christ.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here and draw our attention in these unusual days to the ancient writer Isaiah as we pray together. Father, we thank you for the city in which we reside. Our city is strong and we are surrounded by God's salvation. We ask that you will open the gates to all who are righteous, allow the faithful to enter. Will you keep perfect peace to all those who trust in you? All those whose thoughts are fixed on you, may we trust in the Lord always. The Lord God is the eternal rock. He humbles the proud and brings down the arrogant city. He brings it down to the dust and the poor and oppressed are trampled underfoot and the needy walk all over it. But for those who are righteous, the way is not steep and rough. You are God who does what is right and smooth out the path ahead of them. Lord, we trust, we show our trust in you by obeying your laws and our hearts desire is to glorify you. God, may all the decisions and discernments that need to be made tonight be made in a way that brings you glory and honor. And may the city of Denison be known as a city on a hill with a bright light that points to an everlasting kingdom and the hope of Jesus Christ. And with that, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. This evening, we have a very special guest. Her name is Willie Grace and she is in kindergarten at Lamar Elementary. Willie loves to dance and she's currently competing with Dance Explosion that is located right here in downtown Denison. She enjoys spending time with her sister, jumping on the trampoline, learning to read, and watching Peppa Pig. So Willie, anytime you're ready, sweetheart.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you so much, Willie. And I learned a while ago when speaking with her mother that she also led the pledge for a city council meeting several years ago. So thank you so much for continuing that tradition. At this point in each meeting, there is time set aside so that citizens may speak on action items listed on the agenda. In order to speak, a request to speak card must be completed and returned to the city clerk prior to reaching this part, this point on our agenda. Ms. Wallantine, are there any requests to speak cards? There being none, we will not have any public comments this evening. First item on the agenda, the consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
A second? There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Doty and a second by council member Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, chapter 28, updating section 28 dot 48A, R.I. residential infill overlay district. Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to introduce this item real briefly and then turn it over to our planner, Bill Medina, to kind of go through the details as he drafted many of these changes after working with our builders and developers on how we can continue to make lots available on the interior parts of Denison and our established neighborhoods for new construction. So we regularly get input from our builders and developers looking for ways that we can adapt our ordinances to the market that constantly changes. And at the same time, also, as councils are aware, our vision is to include or create housing for all income levels as well. And so much of our affordable housing in Denison happens in our established neighborhoods that are located in the infill overlay district. And so what comes before you tonight is some proposed changes to continue to adapt to the changes in the market, but also to address that a lot of the vacant lots that we have in our infill area are not just your standard 50 by 100 lot. Some of them have been subdivided over time, chopped up. Some of them are more narrow, they're more wide. They really don't fit inside this nice box that our zoning ordinance has been written for in the past. And so even though our builders have put in about 350 new infill homes over the last five years, we want to see that number continue to grow and continue to provide some infill housing. So the market's changing. We need additional flexibility in our ordinance to address those changes and to keep Denison moving forward on our, in our infill area. We also want to make sure that we maintain sort of the integrity of the neighborhood, meaning the form of the neighborhood, the functionality of it from a connectivity standpoint. We want to keep setbacks generally the same so that as you walk up and down our established neighborhoods, you don't feel like you're kind of moving from one to another, that it's consistent, the character feels the same. And so we've tried to draft an ordinance that really, really does all of those things and at the same time, provide new build opportunities in the infill zone. So with that, I'll ask Bill to come up and kind of talk about some of the main changes that we've made and then we're both available for any questions you might have as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As our city manager stated, the goal here is really to try and provide additional flexibility to our builders to keep our growth that we've seen going while also protecting the character integrity and consistency of our neighborhoods and our infill area. So let's get this on. Here's an outline of the overlay district. I know it can be a little difficult to see, but basically our infill overlay, as written in our ordinance, is this outlined area that you see in red here. It encompasses about half of our city and even goes a little bit over to our highway overlay near 75. This is the core of our developed existing neighborhoods. So whenever we're referring to infill development, we're talking about these little pockets throughout this whole area. So the amendments or the updates that we're wanting to make are going to consist of several amendments within the infill ordinance itself. So it'll provide more flexibility to development within the overlay. These points that we're going to be updating are here. We've noticed that it's sometimes difficult for our developers or builders to meet a 25 or even a 20-foot setback due to the irregular shape of the lots that we see. So to help preserve the character of the neighborhood, we want to go ahead and do away with the 25-foot setback altogether, just in this infill overlay, and instead look at the form of the neighborhood. I have a slide and I'll flip back here in a second that illustrates this perfectly. This house right here on the left that you see is down Main Street. I estimated that it's probably about 15 feet from the property line. Now, there's a vacant lot directly to the west. If a developer were to come in and put a new house there, we'd require a 25-foot setback. That's the code and there's plenty of room there, but that doesn't necessarily make a good planning. It would look out of place. It wouldn't feel right. So instead, we're going to look at each lot on a case-by-case basis to ensure that it fits with the adjacent lots there. Again, as Judd mentioned, lot dimensions. So right now, the code requires a 50 by 100 width and depth due to either topography. All the remaining lots that are left over, kind of challenging to build on because of the topography or we're finding they've been subdivided in the past or the railroad just kind of cut lots in half. So if someone wants to come in and plat, they can't meet the 50 by 100 requirement. It's a challenge for them and for staff, too. So we're going to give you 30% variability to the lot width and depth if you need it. We're still going to encourage that 50 by 100 if you can meet it, but if you need to go down to, let's say, 45 or 40, we're going to try and work with you on that. Same thing goes for the lot size. As you can see, the requirement was 950 square feet. Now we're reducing it to 650 square feet. We've gotten a lot of questions from our builders, a request wanting to do a smaller build. I wouldn't call a 650-square-foot home a tiny home, but they're getting a lot of questions saying, hey, can I go 700 square feet? Can I go 800? We want to allow them a path to do that. The other, one of the last few items here is going to be increased allowance for multifamily. We have a multifamily zoning district in our infill overlay that exists, but it's scattered throughout. What we wanted to do and what we propose in the code as it's written in front of you today is if you have a residentially-zoned property, whether it's zone duplex, whether it's zone single-family 5 or single-family 7-5, we want to give you the option to put a quadplex on there if you can. You can put a duplex if you're zone single-family. Try and build a little bit more affordable housing, increase that density a little bit. We're not saying, when we say multifamily, we're not wanting a high-rise on an infill lot, but if you can meet your setbacks and your parking requirements and your overall size of the property, then you should be able to do that and potentially increase our affordable housing. Last is going to be our architectural repetition requirement. This is one of the items that was requested by our Planning and Zoning Commission chair and the board when they recommended approval was to go ahead and add a requirement in the code that forces the builder to change up the elevation plan. One of their concerns they've seen with a lot of our growth is you have some builders using the same elevation on the entire block or just two elevations on the entire block. And so whenever we're reviewing plans under this new code, I'll look at each elevation and ensure that there's characteristic differences, design differences on each facade to break that up a little bit, add a little more diversity, architectural diversity. So I'm present for any questions that you may have and we recommend approval and so did the Planning and Zoning Commission as well.
Questions for Mr. Medina?
You know, Mayor, the only, Mr. Medina, the only question I have is on the multifamily. That concerns me a little bit, but walk us through a little bit more of the process on if I own two lots downtown or in the overlay district. You know, what is going to be required of me in terms of parking and total square footage of the lot? What's it going to look like? Because I'm just thinking if I'm a neighboring property owner and all of a sudden I've got a fourplex sitting next to me, that's different than a duplex, right? I mean, it's double the density. And so kind of walk us through that. I mean, I've had some conversations with P&amp;Z and your folks there, but help me with that one. Because I know that's something we fought several years ago with people trying to do that, you know, having detached garage and secondary structures and things like that. So just help me with that a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. So we went ahead and also, Judd and I talked about that as well. For our off-street parking requirements, we're looking at one paved parking space per unit, per bedroom for a duplex or multifamily. So that way, we can try and make sure that there is going to be adequate parking, but we also didn't want to require that your entire backyard is just one big parking pad. And then that kind of detracts from creating that consistency with the neighborhood as well. Does that help answer your question?
It does. Okay, so one parking stall per?
Yes, so it's?
Per unit, per bedroom?
That's correct. Not to exceed more than two spaces.
Okay, got you. All right.
So the, to reiterate or kind of build on that, so the thing that's going to really, well, let me back up a little bit more. With either a triplex or a quad, even a duplex, I think the thing, our thought there is that we want to, there's nobody really asking for that right now. We want to open the door a little bit to see if there's some creativity on the part of our builders that they can come up with. What we envision on perhaps a triple or a quad would be you're able to build a single house that looks like a house and fits into the neighborhood, but it actually, in reality, has three or four units in there. What's going to be, I think, the difficult part for that is finding enough parking. So they're going to have to have alley parking off of the rear and come up with that somehow or somehow address the other lot dimension issue. So if you've got two lots, all right, you've got a little bit more space to work with. But so I think there's some things that are going to balance this out enough there. There's also a trigger in there for certain things that have to go to Planning and Zoning Commission. So if it varies more than that 30%, then they got to go to Planning and Zoning Commission to review it. So I think there's enough kind of triggers in there that if we do get a kind of outside-the-box thing that probably is going to spur the interest of the neighbors that we either red-flag it on the staff level as we review the building plans or it ends up going to Planning and Zoning Commission, too.
Well, as long as we retain control as far as the oversight and the review process, then I mean, I feel confident we can, we can have a finished product that we're excited about, right?
Yeah.
That's the main thing. I just want to make sure we're not making it an automatic, you know, hey, metal, you know, that kind of scenario where we still have a review process. That's my focus. I just don't want to see a, you know, two-story box and all of a sudden we've got, you know, four doors and four parking spots and, you know, no one will be happy about that at the end of the day, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
We've seen those built before and we know what the outcome is, so.
And there's, even in the infill zone now, you can see some examples of where they've chopped up a large house into two, three, or four units. And sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. It just spills traffic more onto the street and parking and those things become an issue. So the off-street parking requirement's going to really vet those, but then as staff or Planning and Zoning Commission have their eyes on it, we'll check it out as well.
Got you. All right, thank you.
Refresh my memory, on something like this where a builder wants to do that, does, is there a notice that goes out to the neighbors to give them an opportunity to input their feelings on that?
Yeah, so if you replat a property, that requires a public hearing, so we wouldn't notice adjacent property owners within 200 feet. As Judd also mentioned, if they're wanting to deviate from what is in here now or what we're proposing, then Planning and Zoning Commission would also need to approve that and we would take that through the public hearing process as well.
Yeah, because I just don't want this to come back and bite us down the road.
Understand. Is it the multifamily that?
Yes, yeah. The quad, all of a sudden goes up next to two-bedroom, one-bath on both sides.
Yeah, and I think what, some of the triggers that we have on here, which is your 650 square foot per unit and also the parking requirement, talking with Betty Floyd, our building official, you know, you still have to meet five-yard setbacks on both sides of the property from the building because that becomes a fire issue as well. So you're not going to, we shouldn't be able to see, or we shouldn't see a quadplex be built up, filling up the entire lot, filling it up with parking spaces and just kind of looking more of like a retail or something that you'd see out of Gateway versus what we see in the infill lot.
Thank you.
So are there some protections in this ordinance while we picture it looking like a house and having one door? Does this ordinance say they have to do that? That the multiplex, like a quad, would have to blend in with the neighborhood? I just feel like the developer from Dallas isn't going to care if it blends in with the houses next door. They'll put three or four doors and whatever they can do. So that's more convenient than a shared entrance. I just want to make sure we protect our historic neighborhoods and have something that's going to be more cohesive with them.
Yeah, unfortunately, we lost a lot of our architectural control with the legislation that was passed, you know, a couple of years, well, a year and a half ago. As far as, as far as that goes, and that's where we stepped back and tried to just focus on the form of it. So where the building sits on the lot, the setback, both sides and front and back, the lot coverage, we can still control. So I think the box that the house is going to sit in, we can have control over that. What materials they use and where doors are placed, that sort of thing, we can't. So that, it's, I don't know. We're opening the door a little bit here with some flexibility, but I feel like if somebody who's trying to take advantage of it is going to get triggered and end up before Planning and Zoning Commission and we're going to have a chance to look at that, so. I don't know if that helps answer your question, but we put in as many protections as we feel we could while still being flexible.
Any other questions for Mr. Medina? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council?
I do think the architectural repetition requirement is a great thing to have in there. We have seen a lot of houses on whole streets that are the same house, so this will help give us a little bit of variety.
I can assure you, council member Hander, that that is, makes my heart happy, so.
I'm all for increased multifamily. I do worry about a quadplex. I think it's because that's a big unknown in our city. We don't have that many of those. And the ones we do have haven't necessarily been done properly, so I do have reluctance on that.
I agree. You know, that's my only concern as well. Mr. Medina, how would this affect detached structures in terms of, you know, one thing we witnessed down in the redevelopment of the east side of Austin, which is something that was done very well, but it's kind of, you know, some of that's kind of coming back now to haunt them in terms of allowing the primary residence and a secondary detached structure. There was a secondary residence and what they've gone in and done is they've turned them into condominiums and sold them separately in order to divide the lot. But now you have, you know, a lot of vehicles stacked up, multi-residents, things like that. How would this affect that as far as if I wanted to build something that had a detached structure with a secondary residence? Would I, that fit this bill?
Yeah, so just to clarify the question, you're stating what if you have a garage that you're wanting to turn into a separate residence, plummet and hold nine yards, that sort of deal? So in that situation, you would still need to meet your lot dimensions. In the infill, you're lucky if you have a lot that's going to be 50 by 150 already. So being able to, one, subdivide that into a separate property, you run into a lot of challenges. If you wanted to go smaller and let's say you just wanted to plat it 50 by 1, by 50 by 50, right? Planning and Zoning Commission would need to prove it and it would need to have eyes on it from us as well as Planning and Zoning Commission. So something like that likely wouldn't happen. You also wouldn't have, you'd be challenged to meet parking requirements, off-street parking requirements on a detached garage that's been separated. So I think that we've crafted it in a way to prevent instances like that while also getting somebody to do a, allowing somebody to do a duplex that's attached. When you start detaching it and you start having building separation, you kind of run out of room in the infill.
Right. And then what about as far as existing structures? How will this affect, you know, people that want to come in and repurpose existing? Is this only going to apply to new construction or is this going to also apply to?
It would apply to both. So if somebody were to come in with an existing detached garage wanting to pull a permit and say, I want to renovate it for a single-family use or I want to rent it out, first I'd check the zoning, but then we'd also look at the same things I just mentioned, the setbacks, the parking. Just because it is existing doesn't mean that you're exempt from the code. We still have to apply this to you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? A motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a way to maybe start off a little slower? I don't know. Quadplexes just make me so nervous that we're jumping from, used to you had to have two lots to have the duplex. Now we're letting you have it on one if you're able to work it out, but all of a sudden we're jumping all the way to a quad. It just seems like we're really taking a big leap without seeing how even the duplexes do.
So one suggestion would be if they're, if they're going to do, you can kind of draw the line wherever you want, but if you're, if you're going to do a triple or a quad, make that a conditional use permit requirement. So they've got to come through, they have to come through Planning and Zoning Commission, regardless of what the lot looks like or anything else. If they're building a new building, it's going to have three or four units in it. That's an automatic trigger for a CUP. Could do that for a duplex as well, you know, just depending on where you want to draw the line, but that may be an easier way to kind of ease in the multifamily aspect of it.
And carve that out down the road.
Yeah.
I think I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah, we don't want to put additional burden on staff. Yeah, we don't want to put additional burden on staff, but I could see one builder having 40 permits ready to go tomorrow morning.
Yeah, that's my fear, yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, at least for the triple, I think a duplex can be, is more doable.
I agree.
But a triple or a quad may want to make that a CUP requirement and, you know, take that through Planning and Zoning. Yeah. And I think, John, could they just amend the ordinance for that tonight with that, with that change?
I would just say if we want to amend, let's do triple or above, just to, and yes, you can, of course.
So, okay.
So council member Hander, do you want to make that motion with the exception?
I can do it. I can do it. So let's try this out. I move to approve the ordinance amending the Denison Municipal Code, chapter 28, as presented, with the exception of requiring a conditional use permit for triplex and quadplex developments.
Second.
There is a motion by council member Hander and a second by council member Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and receive testimony from the co-compliance manager on the unsafe conditions of the posted structure at 925 West Baker and take action. Mr. Lay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see everyone. On September 9th, 2020, Leroy Daley Jr., Sandra Marie Daley, and the estate of Sandra Marie Daley were given notice to, a violation to repair, demolish the structure at 925 West Baker. The owner has failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with chapter 13, article 7, section 13 dash 154, H, M, N, and O of the Denison Code of Ordinances. The appraised, or the structure was worked for minimum property standards earlier this year without any success. The appraised value of the improvement was $28,328 this year. Currently, taxes owed are $1,055.85. Taxes have not been paid on the structure since 2017. There's been no water at the structure since April 15th, 2015. The structure is a nuisance in the neighborhood. Structure is not weather-tight. The roof is in poor condition. The residence is not fit to be occupied. Record of violations, notices, and unsafe conditions of the property are unfiled in the co-compliance department. Staff is requesting to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. And I will make a correction. The water has been off since April 15th, 2019. I believe I said 2015. I am available for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lay? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at 925 West Baker a nuisance and unsafe to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
There is a motion by council member Crowley and a second by council member Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lay. Thank you, Mr. Medina. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on entering into a professional services agreement with Podolsky Properties LLC for payment of consulting services related to engineering, planning, and other costs related to the development of Podolsky Properties, 118.09 acre site. Mr. Rex.
Thank you.
So as councils are aware, we've been working with the owner of this about 120-acre site, Podolsky Properties, represented by Ron and Josh Holly for quite some time, last few months. We're exploring a couple of different options with the property right now. One of them is to create a public improvement district to help finance the public improvements for the development. And really, in looking at what needs to be done to engineer and plan the site, in addition to the developer doing some engineering and planning and other services up front, the city, due to the location of the site, has a need to engage our engineers. the city, due to the location of the site, has a need to engage our engineer and planning folks and consultants in helping make sure that the site can connect from a utility and street standpoint. And so, what we would want to do is enter into a, a professional services agreement with the property owner so that they can basically help the city cover the upfront costs of researching the development, making sure we plan out the utilities and streets in the right way. The developer would set aside funds into basically an escrow account that would be drawn from as we have costs associated to the development. We contemplate that when the, the public improvement district gets set up, that all of those costs would be rolled into the, the assessment that would be levied through the PID. But upfront, we don't want to be out any money and, and want to make sure that the developer is covering the impacts on the, on the cities and, or the city and our costs as well. So, that's kind of what we're looking at here. Chris, if you'll flip to the next page here. This is generally where the site's located. It's adjacent to U.S. seventy-five and Loy Lake Park. The next, next slide shows exactly which parcels are involved. It's not all of the parcels yet. The, the developer's still trying to assemble some of the missing teeth, a long seventy-five there. But we, they've got enough property now that we can move, move forward and we've been meeting on a regular basis with them every two weeks to keep the project moving along. So, in conjunction with this, we are also in the process of selecting a PID administrator that will represent the city, work for the city, and administer the, help us create and administer the public improvement district. So, that process is in the works right now as well. So, the developer could not attend tonight. They're actually at Sherman City Council Meeting, talking about impact fees. So, they have some projects down in, in Sherman as well, but they've been very good to work with and supportive of this and ready to move ahead. In fact, they've already signed the agreement, so. Happy to answer any questions you've got and we're excited to keep this project moving along.
Questions for Mr. Rex? Discussion from Council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve entering into a professional services agreement with Podolsky Properties LLC for payment of consulting services related to engineering, planning, and other costs related to the development of Podolsky Properties, one-hundred-and-eighteen-point-zero-nine acre site, and for the city manager to execute the same.
Second?
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. It's good news. We have no need for an executive session this evening. I'm sure that's going to make a lot of people happy. So, there being no further business to come before the Council this evening. The time is six-thirty-three and we are adjourned.